Good evening, this is Tuesday, March fourth. This is the Newcastle Planning Board meeting. We have a quorum tonight, so is there a motion to open the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This evening, we have two of our assistants.
Alternates.
Alternates sitting. So Jennifer and Dick will be sitting tonight. Each will be participating. Each has a vote this evening too. Uh, so we'll have a total of uh three regular members and two um others. And so we're all set, we'll have five. Okay? Our first item is a, is it a continued public hearing? Continued public hearing for Panetti. This is to Main Street. This is an application for a site development plan approval. Application for a preliminary subdivision approval. Stormwater management, erosion and sedimentation control for construction of a new single-family residence at Two Main Street, Kisco Park.
For the record, Ralph Alfonzetti, engineer for the project. Um, so this has been in front of the board for some time. I think we're pretty much at the end. Uh, addressed uh pretty much all the comments, there's a couple of things left. Um, and I know last time I was here, the board asked me to look at a couple of trees if um you can save them. Uh, they were a little bit too close to the parking area and turnaround that I think would have been damaged the roots. So I kept them as being removed. Um, but if we can during construction, we will definitely save them.
Did you uh reduce the size of that turnaround a little?
It, we couldn't really reduce the size of it because we needed to back out of the garage. Um, and if you reduce it, you're gonna end up just kind of going back and forth. It'd be very difficult to get out, so.
Okay. And you have to do other things with cut and fill anyway if you, if you, oh, I got it. Okay.
I might have, you know, see what kind of plans that you guys want.
Yeah, I think that would be good. Uh, and uh, so that's what you have up there, that's great. Sabrina, do you wanna run through your comments on this? On Panetti?
Sure. Um, uh, real quickly, I'm not real sure, but it is a site to action under the State Environmental Policy Review Act.
Um. State law. State environmental policy review act.
Um. Initially, Ralph, you had provided uh coverage calculation worksheets. And I believe your narrative this time said that they were, that you revised them and included them, but no, they were not revised and updated coverage calculation worksheets included in your submission. So we're going to need those. In addition, I think it would be helpful to have um a demarcation on the plan of the area so that I can confirm the coverage calculation worksheet. Um, you did a great job um in other applications, but we actually need it for this application as well. So if you can put them on the plan, it would be helpful. And then the last comment I had is that given the extent of the wetland and the wetland buffer, where we can put the markings on the property um for a, for a fence to, to, you know, identify the, the area is not to be protected.
To be protected.
We should do that. And that's it.
Okay, so the cover sheets and the backup uh diagrams, we could definitely supply to you. Um, we did put boulders along the buffer. Um, if you can see my plan right. Let me see how I can do this. Right about where my cursor is. Uh, we do have boulders along that. Um, I don't know if that's sufficient or if you guys are looking for something different.
Um, what is the spacing of the boulders, you know?
Ten feet, ten feet.
About ten feet, okay. Yeah, I mean, I leave it up to Dennis just to whether he thinks, does he think that that is satisfactory?
Well, I think it's a demarcation, not necessarily jail. Keep people. I think those boulders might be.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, they should repress on grade, soil and not such that. I expect it to sink in, you know, so.
Dennis, you had some comments?
Just a couple. Um. So obviously, uh, first one just has to do with just uh simple changes on uh tree replacement calculation table. Uh, again, the, the only thing that I just wasn't entirely comfortable with was sort of that cluster replacement planting you had near, you know, just the, just the way that limits of expansion juts out. Obviously, that's, you know, hopefully something you're not gonna need anytime soon, but um, you know, i- if you're willing to just move the trees away, maybe arrange them more in a linear fashion, even, you know, if you wanna use the buffer as a guide, just, just so that there's ample room that needs to be developed someday. And obviously, any machinery that goes in there isn't gonna impact those trees. Uh, and then, you know, just with respect to uh the two submissions, so, you know, uh, obviously on the survey, there's indication you're gonna be doing stuff in the buffer on your plans. There's no indication of that, so I just need clarification. If you're gonna do something in the buffer, you just need a wetland permit to do, you know, and just let us know what you're gonna be doing within there uh with respect to either removing the walls or abandoning rows or, you know, how that would happen.
For the tree planting, can I ask, um, since we're gonna be abandoning that gravel road, can we plant the trees in that to help vegetate that? Or is that something you don't wanna?
No, I mean, if you're, if you're not looking to use that as a, you know, vehicular thoroughfare in the future, that would be a great deterrent. I have no problem with that. Um, I would just caution uh that probably the substrate, you know, as is, is, is probably not conducive to that 'cause it's just been compacted all this time to service that. So, you know, you definitely need to do some soil maintenance on that. But if it's strictly just a planting operation, I think that's something we could, you know, we could work with and certainly put trees in there. I think it's a good idea if you're not gonna use it.
Okay, is that something I can work out with Dennis or?
Sure, yeah. I, I guess the issue with Dennis is um, but we, we still haven't heard from you in terms of what you're doing with the, the wall because we do see areas where the wall's gonna be removed and it's in the buffer and the dirt road's going to be removed and that's in the buffer. But if the road is just going to be abandoned and then we're gonna, but just put planting in, I don't know if that triggers a need for a wetland permit. The wall is another issue, we still haven't heard on that, but um if, if you just plant.
Right, yeah, I try, I always tell people, I try not to regularly planting so long as you're not looking to fill wetlands to make it drier for your plants or, you know, something to that effect. Just, you know, in this case, obviously, it's tough to work with once they're agreed, but at the ultimate goal at the end of the day is the planting. We could work with that, yes.
So the issue in terms of the wetland buffer and the wetland application is whether or not you're going to be working and pulling out uh any part of the wall from the buffer.
We don't need to, so that.
I, I would suggest you don't really want to.
No.
Because we'd have to go through a public hearing on a wetlands application.
Yeah, so we're not gonna touch.
What type of wall is it?
Stonewall.
It's a far more stone wall?
Yeah, it's a field stone wall.
I mean.
Everybody loves those.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no reason for us to do it.
Yeah, I mean, if there's, if there's a pressing reason, you really want to do it and the owners want to do it, that's fine. But the understanding is that we're very close to the finish line, but if you do that and you do other things in the buffer, now you start to push us back away from the finish line. Which is probably what you don't wanna do.
No, we do not.
Okay. So we're okay with plantings, we'll leave the, the wall as is. So you have to change the uh, the, the plans then because I think it's, at least in some areas, as Dennis points out, it says you're removing walls and you're removing a dirt road. So if you're just letting the dirt road go fallow and, and then you can put some plantings in, that's fine.
Yeah, so we'll coordinate the plat in our plan and make sure both are coordinated. We're not gonna go into the buffer.
You just, you just, you know, one of those notes on the survey, that's gonna be dialed, that's very confusing, that's all.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
That's, that's into my comments, thank you.
Great, thanks Dennis. Bob, you had some comments?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, minor comments I'll go through real quick. Uh, proposed driveway profile of fewer minor sweeps on actually indicated uh stationing elevations while I found the one, number two. Two minutes on there, priority of B P, we always like to see the wetlands state out by a surveyor. Uh, once it's reviewed by Dennis in the field, that sets the grounds for Sabrina's point, the demarcate with boulders. So once they know where it is in ground by the surveyor, they can demarcate it so we know we're in the right spot. Uh, also, no hand development activity should be done uh within wetlands buffer unless it goes back to the board. That's no too may be put on the plan. Uh, once the updated coverage calculations are approved by Sabrina, uh, it'd be nice to have them on the plan, the subdivision map. Because it's always great to have them on one place in order to pull up the control files to find out where they should be. Uh, number four, we should get copies of the site we should treat the system. And for some reason, a lot of times, the surveys I've seen of late uh start making up their own tax math designations, but I need written confirmation from Josh to make certain he's the guy that came up with this. So that's number five. Uh, and the number six, they had to obtain a street opening permit for bar carry and a water tapping permit for the driveway access and the tapping for the water. And last but not least, since it's more than 5,000 square feet of disturbance um within East Hudson watershed, they have to get a uh N O Y for erosion and sedimentation control only. And one point with plat, um, Ralph makes certain they submit the plat to us so we can have Dennis and I look at it. A lot of times, they'll bring it up to the county, they'll get it signed, they'll have everyone look at it, and I'll be the last one to see it. And there's missing things that they gotta go through the whole thing again. It's a lot of waste of time and effort. So please, please, please have the surveyor PDF, copy of it once you revise it so Dennis and I can look at it to make certain these requirements that he's looking for. And those are my comments for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thanks Bob. And you indicated that uh you would not object to having these conditioned uh in, in the resolution?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Okay, super. All right, uh, any questions, comments, board members on the application?
Nope.
Any comments from the public? Just losing our money exactly time though. Okay, not seeing any, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, is there, thank you, Dick, is there a motion to instruct staff to drop a resolution for our next meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, may I stress that we would need the revised coverage calculation worksheets in that plan prior to formalizing that resolution?
Yes. So we can't do it until, you know, until we have it?
Not a problem.
Okay. Very good, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So a question uh from Mr. Alfonzetti. Do you, when you think that you will have uh the revised document that we can turn, oh, you're gender with the resolution time of that?
Okay, I can get it to you tomorrow.
I'm sorry?
I think I can get it to you tomorrow.
Too soon, please.
And since you've got a table, we'll get it, we'll, how about that?
Okay, no problem.
And then, and, and kind of whatever Dennis needed as well as far as the tree replacement and ground rise.
Okay. All right.
Not a problem.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we go to our next item. Uh, this is a public hearing for the Galatas, fifteen Surf Lane. This is an application for an amendment to a resolution of approval, of application for a final subdivision plat approval, application for a site development plan approval to mitigate the infringement of existing sports court and clearing of the amendment lines. Unfortunately, I think I'm the only one that has history on this one, with brand. So we've suffered through this with the applicant. And any of this, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes and no.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
You just sort of summed it up. Um, right, there was a prior approval.
Right.
Um, for just to bring everyone up to speed fairly quickly, just introduce myself, Brett Schwartz from Zaren Assignments, representing the Galatas. Um, so this was essentially a, a small backyard improvement project. It was a new proposed kitchen, but there was a lot of work involved because when the Galatas purchased the property, there were already existing non-conformities on coverage due to the prior owner's improvements without getting prior approval. So our client fixed the prior non-conformity by removing a lot of coverage, installed a lot of landscaping, stormwater improvements, yes, got approval for the, for the outdoor kitchen they wanted. All that work, that was the subdivision boards approval, that's been installed and completed. And when it came time for the as-built survey, there was a discrepancy in the coverage that was approved versus what was shown on the as-built survey. So we're here tonight asking for an increase in 234 square feet, not to do anything different, just to bring the as-built survey into performance with the approved resolution.
Yep, okay. Where was the uh, the walk, where was the walkways that you were initially working on, on plan?
So, um, Felicia, remember, if someone could allow Alan onto the screen, how does that work?
I'm sorry?
Want me to do it?
Thank you, Sabrina.
I don't, I don't have the plan actually, I only have the resolution.
Alan, Alan, Sabrina, here he is, he just raised his hand.
Okay.
Hi, hello there. Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Members of the board, can I share a screen? I'm not sure, it's been in a webinar.
You should be able to share your screen.
Um. And I'm looking. Does he wear?
On the bottom of your, your, your screen?
There's show captions, transcript, raise hand, chat, audio. All I have.
Did you come to the webinar or did you come in as a, as a?
Carrie's probably in the webinar.
Oh, you should be able to share.
It should be in the bottom, it's a green button. If you share, if you're, if in the webinar, it should be green button. Right, Sabrina, is that how we?
Yes, it should be green button.
Yeah.
If I have one, I would like, I assure you.
Okay. Um.
Well, it's, it's, it's not that critical.
We pull it up.
Okay, okay.
It, it's not that critical of an issue. The, the, the lot has tried to remove the walkway, but it did not resolve the coverage issue. And um, and so they wanna keep the, the walkways and correct the coverage issue. So that's why it's 234 square feet.
So the walkways is in here?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Brett.
Yeah, well, walkways between the end of the driveway and that terrace, that's where it is.
Okay, great.
Um, and you, considering that, you know, there's sport courts that were removed and a lot of other features that were done, there's an entire stormwater management practice that's been installed. There's been a lot of improvements on this property.
Yes, in 2023, the planning board approved all of the improvements and the removals and trying to bring in as close to performance as possible. We thought in, when we approved the project, when the planning board approved the project in 2023, that the coverage was set. It wasn't until the as-built and the final survey that the realization that the coverage was not what it should be. Um, and the lot has tried to correct it so they could close out their building permits. Um, and that still wasn't enough. So it was suggested that they come back to your board and correct this situation so that we can um, and they wanted to keep the walkways, so.
Yep, okay, great.
They're still within compliance of the maximum allowable coverage in the general economy.
Right.
Okay, any questions on, on this? I, I know this is new for all board members, but it's, we went through a very tortured application on this a while ago. And I think the 243 feet is probably typical families making the kitchen too big for the wife to have to work in all the time, so it's probably the issue. But in any event, I mean, we went through a lot here and they did a lot of work to comply. And I think this was just one of those things they discovered at the end. That, and really, 234 square feet is tremendous.
Mm-hmm.
Right, you know that. You can, you can educate us on that better. But it's, it's really very, very minor, so any questions on it at all?
No.
No questions? Okay. Dick, any questions, issues?
No.
Uh, any questions? I hope not from the public. Is not, not seeing any, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Great, we have a resolution before us uh that's been drafted in anticipation of um, um, closing the public hearing this evening. Any questions or issues on the resolution? Are you set with it, have you seen it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion, the resolution's carried, and you're all set?
Thank you.
Sorry it took that long, but anyway. Sorry about that. Best of luck. Hopefully, never come back to see us again.
Exactly.
Yes, exactly. Alrighty, we go to our next item. This is an informal hearing, this is for uh 466 dash 46, 456 dash 462 Armup Road. This is a preliminary of subdivision plat application, site development plan application, stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control application, tree removal permit, uh, application for the construction of a four-lot subdivision. I think there should also be steep slope application in there too?
Might have to.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, especially around lot one and two, we have some slopes over there.
So that's all inclusive. Okay.
Good evening, Ralph Alfonzetti, civil engineer, for the project. Um, I can share my screen if you will.
So where we were last time was we, as a board, had really kind of reached the conclusion that we thought that a conservation subdivision might be the best solution for this property, not a conventional. Ralph is tasked with showing us why we were so smart. We thought that was the right reason. Um, so he was gonna give us all kinds of comparisons uh in terms of environmental impacts and then come up with a plan uh that, that might work as a conservation development. So um, the conventional, you know, we still technically are comparing that, but I, you may want to go through the grid and just, you know, talk about those comparisons. Um, and, you know, in that case of what you think might be the, the requirement for the conservation development. The way we have to do it here as a board under our regulations is before we can consider a conservation subdivision, we have to have an approvable conventional subdivision prepared and presented to us. Uh, it doesn't have to be to the 100th percent of completion, but something that is provable, that we recognize would work and then we can take it from there and, uh, conservation, use the word, uh, conservation relevant where it makes sense. So that's where we, that's where we got to. So last time around, we looked at the conventional. We concluded that conservation easement would be of interest. We wanted to see that, see the comparisons and then start to look at uh what, what the benefits might be.
So, as the chairman said, we landed on the conservation subdivision. Uh, during the last meeting, there was talk about um having two entrances, or, I'm sorry, one entrance, one exit, one on each side. Um, we looked at this a little bit further. Uh, and we've come up with this plan that only has one access point to Route 128. Um, it is in an area that is not as steep. Um, I have a matrix that I'll pull up in a second, but the site disturbance, the cut and fill, the steep slope disturbance, the impervious is all much, much less compared to the conventional subdivision. Um, and then if you were to compare that to um the conservation subdivision with two access points to 128, this is environmentally a, a better option. Um, I can go over the matrix if you want, I can pull it up on the screen here.
Yeah, that would be good.
Hopefully. Um, so as you can see, um, just about every category um is less. Uh, you know, and significantly, the limits of disturbances is, you know, down. Uh, all the plans have no buffer disturbance or wetland disturbance, so that's, that's a wash in, in all of them. Um, as you can see, the steep slope disturbance, uh, 15 to 25, 25 to 35 and above, um, 35, there's a slight increase in the above 35 disturbance. Um, but it, it is overall, the disturbance to steep slope is, is less.
And that's the one curve, curb cut analysis?
Is that? And that's the one curb cut analysis, yes, that we saw on the previous plan. Um, the impervious surface is down.
And is that, is that curb cut in the location of the site curb cut now or is it in a different location?
It's in a different location. The site curb cut now is, um, if you can see my cursor, it's approximately that location there.
Yeah.
Um, so it is a little bit further south. But we do have options with um the curb cut as it's shown on this plan right now. We can move it. Um, I know we have to do a site distance analysis. Uh, we actually, I believe they started it already. Um, so I know we have to do that. I just wanted to make sure we run the right uh path as far as the layout of the houses and the common driveway and, and all that, and.
Is that curb cut that you're proposing now, is that a close to where the old house was that was demolished?
No, the old house that was demolished is in this area where my cursor is now.
Oh, it was much further north then?
Yeah, um, I have an existing conditions plan, if I scroll up to it. Um, do you see that outline right there?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
That's where that is. And then like kind of right behind that house, it's, it's very, very steep. So if you were to put something there, it's tough to get down to.
Behind it going page north?
Yes.
Right. And then right at the dashed line which separates the two primary parcels, that's where the existing curb cut is now, approximately?
Yeah, you can see, I just zoomed in a little bit, you can see the word driveway there?
Yes, yep.
Yep, that's where that is.
So that does work as a curb cut and theoretically, it may work as line of sight?
Correct.
Okay. And then it would be centrally located, so you would have a fair distribution of residents driving on?
On your neighbors.
On your neighbors.
Driveway, yes, yes, I agree, yes.
Driveway, yes. Okay.
It was an option that we thought about. Um. The, oh, sorry, the, the grading would be a little bit more, but it may work out better. But, you know, it's definitely an option. When we, when we look at our, our site uh distance analysis, that'll be one thing that we, we do look at. I don't think that'll change much of the um impervious numbers or limits of disturbance or things like that.
Probably not.
Those will be nominal to, you know, the changes.
But it is the existing curb cut, which we all know, state kind of.
It's kind of still there.
It's kind of still there.
Right, yeah.
And what was that old curb cut from? Is that from the old house?
I don't know, I don't think it was the old house 'cause the, the house.
Again, it was so much further to the north.
Right, and it had its own curb cut.
Yes, exactly.
Maybe just to get to the fields in the back.
It could have been, yes. But I mean, it's, it's a paved, uh, right now, you know, I drove on it actually a few times. Uh, it's paved, it has pillars on each side, it's, it's an established access point.
Yeah, yeah, okay. But what you're proposing though is, is, is a cut that's further to the south.
It is, um, right now, this plan shows that, um, this plan, there would probably be less cut and fill with this plan than that one. Um, you know, less earth movement because that one, you know, you come in and then it, it kind of drops down. Um, but honestly, the site distance analysis will kind of dictate where that's going to be.
Yeah.
You know, safety first, we have to abide by, you know, what we need to do there. Uh, but like I said, I just wanted to make sure we're on the right track as far as layout, driveway, and all, and all of those things.
Okay. Any questions?
Other question?
On the, yes, please, yeah.
Ralph, on lot one, does lot one have specifics criteria for dimensions and area that it must maintain? Or is that kind of at your discretion? Or is it the leftover after you lay out two, three, four and five?
It's just a leftover, we can make it bigger, smaller, whatever.
Okay. So there's, so, because I, as we're looking, I, I had some concern with the tight, I know we looked at a regular subdivision which has a lot of openness. And then we, we went down to this, you know, these are four acre lots, but really everything's happening like on the front three-quarter of an acre. And there's all the space in the back, which I know is wetland and protected, we're not gonna mess with. But then we have all this lot one, and I'm wondering if we added 25 feet to each lot, if it would just not make the, because the neighbors are less than 100 feet apart. So I wonder if that would just help.
Can I make a point for the planning board? Um, so with the conservation subdivision, you not only confirm that you want the conservation subdivision, but you have to establish setbacks. And that is something that you did not do. So right now, there's kind of a mix of front yard setbacks and side yard setbacks. So you really need to direct the applicant to employ whether it's a half acre requirements or acre requirements. You really need to guide the applicant with the setbacks.
Oh, okay, thank you. And I think that, yeah, so, for example, I think Sabrina, you said that, for example, the front yard setbacks are basically the half acre uh regulations, 37 and a half feet.
Well, 37 and a half feet is not the half acre, it's 50 feet for the half acre.
Huh, okay.
But the side, but it, but it's not, it's not fulfilling the requirements of a, of a more dense district at this point.
Okay.
It's kind of a mix based on where he's placed things. But I think if you're looking for more space between the houses, you know, discussing the setbacks in the side yards are really important.
Okay. And, and to refresh us, um, this is a two acre zone?
Yes.
And we have the ability to go how many um zones down for conservation?
It's, it's up to you.
We can go down to a quarter acre?
And, and.
We can go down to a quarter acre, we have no limitation on it?
Yeah, you could.
We can compress it that much, okay.
You could really cluster it.
Yeah, you can.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I think the reason why we left lot one relatively large and compacted the houses is for the whole reason of health conservation subdivision, you're supposed to try to maximize the amount of undisturbed land or, you know, natural land. Now, I understand we have the entire buffer and everything behind it, undisturbed, but it would also try to maximize that one lot.
It looks like you also have that stormwater area that's in, in lot one as well.
Correct.
So, I mean, that does take up a certain amount of space.
Doesn't.
We don't know how it's going to finalize at this point, but it looks like you need to set aside some space there. I think it's a good idea to have that off of actual homeowners' lots, on a separate lot for marketing and other reasons.
And I believe if you remember back when we first started this whole process, no one really liked that lot when they had a house there.
Right. It was super steep.
It, it was, it was kind of tucked in a, in a corner with the steep slope and plus
Very tight.
the adjacent neighbor wasn't, wasn't the best neighbor for that, that spot.
Right.
But leaving like this, that can be all vegetated and buffer, and it would look, it would look good.
Yep, okay. Do you have a preference in terms of what you want to see in terms of, does, does your, you know, does the owner have a preference in terms of what he wants to see in terms of setbacks and side yards and front yards?
Um, I would like to keep the side yard as, as twenty five. Front yard, we can go anything, I mean, I don't think any of our houses are closer than a hundred feet than right to the front yard. And the rear yard is not an issue either.
Right.
So my, my only preference is twenty five feet for the side yard.
What's the side yard for an R two A right now, is it thirty five?
I'm taking out the code right now, hang on two seconds.
I have, so R two A is forty five feet on the side. R one A is thirty five feet on the side, and R one half A is twenty feet on the side, but not less than fifty for both sides. So it looks like Ralph, your minimums are somewhere like in the twenty three foot range, so you would need probably R one half, uh, one half A for a side yard setback?
Yeah, I think the intention is twenty five feet minimum on ours, so if there is one that's written as five three, it could, it could just be a typo or something, but yeah, I, I, I see what you're saying.
So do we have to set, can we set alternatives to a specific zone yard setback? Or can we happen to meet R one half, R one or R two A?
You have to meet an existing.
Twenty five, that's a good option. Yeah, so it would have to be categorized as R one half A for minimum yards.
So maybe it would be twenty eight.
And I think you made a further nail, maybe twenty feet but not less than fifty for both sides, which, which I believe you have.
Yeah, that works, that works.
Keep in mind, keep in mind, that's not going to restrict the new impervious based on the new code changes with stormwater, right, Jeff?
Uh, yeah, and then that was something I was actually going to mention, so you still have to make sure of that with that, and I think you can do it right now, but make sure that you fit all your, um, all your, uh, O D V P, and then you have the, I think it's number two, lot two, you have a setback that's actually behind the housing sheet, so fit your, you can have your setbacks for the, for the setback. From when the house was from the property line, with the, the new code.
Yep. Okay. Does anyone have any concern with what the applicant would prefer to do, you know, with the R one half A?
Well, my concern necessarily wasn't the setback from the property line, it was that, and maybe it's a marketing thing, we're, we're selling four acre parcels, but these houses are kind of on top of each other. And my point was if lot one is just leftover and it's massive, it's twice as big as the other four lots. If we could move those property lines and make lots two, three, four, five thicker, make lot one thinner, we can still get the detention in. But it lets these lots have a little bit more space between the homes. And maybe the lots now aren't four acres, they become four and a quarter acres or four point three acres, because we're adding twenty five feet down the whole strip. I think it just, you know, you're looking to do four acre lots and you're looking to do something big and nice, and you're going to look out the window, the neighbors are going to be right there, so.
I totally agree with you, but the only issue that I see.
Well, you could, you have to come up, unfortunately, do the whole microphone thing.
More informal here, very optional, in principle, of C G homes. Totally agree with you, would prefer that. The issue is if you look at the counters, I think there is actually fairly substantial topography there. That kind of, you know, if we start pushing it wider, which I agree, then we have to basically see where the house itself ends up, the one on lot two. You know, so that's, that's why I see the limiting factor here.
Mm-hmm.
So if we're not pushing it over just because of a geography, because of the topography, then it really doesn't make a difference, because you still, you're basically still constrained by it.
You're looking for flat areas to place the home.
Yeah, exactly.
To minimize cut.
Trying to minimize the cut and fill and disturbance, and that hill is really substantial there, so. Start cutting into it when you're really creating something which is very invasive, and then you have to figure out how to deal with, probably not as attractive.
Then you keep chasing yourself all to find your next platform.
Exact, exactly, yeah, yeah, exactly, so this actually gives you.
I mean, like the house on the right, they're definitely, I know that's the expansion area up in the upper corner.
Right.
But the expansion area could go to the other side of the street where the other expansions areas are, and that house could push into that flat area, and you might just be able to.
You might be able to shift it over, just.
Oh, you, you get my suggestion, huh?
Oh, yeah, no, no, I think, I, I mean, it's a great marketing suggestion, obviously.
You feel like you're pushed.
You don't want to end up with, you know, when we have six acre lots, we'll cut them down to four acre lots.
Right.
Obviously, six sounds better than four, but.
But it's four, and it's acting like almost a half acre.
I mean, we can look at it, but.
We can look at it.
I mean, we're, we're not restricted in terms of, I mean, we have enough frontage clearly here, so.
Mm-hmm.
So whatever, you know, in terms of topography and I guess expansion area, I don't know if it can go on the other side because of the slope or not.
Well, there, so, yeah, we.
Well, one of the things that you identified, one of the things that we try to do with the conservation development is to avoid additional, you know, impacts to slopes and weapons and buffers, et cetera, and that's what you've done here.
Exactly. Right. Right.
So if you start chasing it, we might start impacting more of these slopes now.
That's why we, we thought that.
Yeah, just give it a look see.
No, I appreciate that.
And by the way, I don't, to Greg's point, they don't necessarily have to be the same exact width.
Right, they could be different.
Yeah.
Sure. No, no, they, no, you can see already, but that one is larger than
Yeah, yes.
the, the others, and that's, I said, it's a function of the fact that you have to kind of, that's where you get fixated, you know, in terms of minimum disturbance.
Yeah.
And from there, you're basically just setting them up. So that's where we kind of, that's how we looked at it. I mean, we can push it over a little bit, I don't think it's going to be sufficient.
By the same token, you know.
And then it's going to probably be more intrusive on, on this, on the slopes itself.
And then leaving lot one open as, as large as it is is also a benefit to the neighborhood as well.
It really does.
To play out there or whatever.
Yeah, it could become, it's a nice buffer zone in general. And also with, you know, with D E P, I mean, I don't know how much of drainage area he's gonna, we're gonna need anyway, because of that.
And if we do stretch it out, it will increase the impervious.
Yeah.
Just.
Yes.
Of course, by.
The roadway, the roadway, yeah, correct.
Yeah, by nature.
But if you bring the roadway in the center, the existing curb cut, you might be able to, to have the ones on the ends not be so long. And you have those historic pillars on the side, so that would.
Possibly, but I do need turnarounds on either end for a fire truck, so almost.
Oh, they can't go into driveways, right, yeah.
Yeah, I think what the issue is, how to service it and all.
Yep.
Those fire trucks.
Definitely look at keeping the driveway where it is, because obviously I would like to avoid getting another curb cut from the state, which is a nightmare.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So, the only issue was we were trying to figure out first traffic study, and then we can see based on the sidelines.
Yeah, the sidelines.
And that's the reason why we pushed it down towards a flat area, because there you have, clearly here you're coming up from the hill down, and you have more limited kind of. Where here you basically have view up and down, so, but studies will show it, so.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Yep, Sabrina, you guys come, you had comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, for, for everybody involved, this is an unlisted action in accordance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And there needs to be a little bit more detail in the A A F as to the conservation subdivision and the benefits of the conservation subdivision. Um, and quantification of the earth moving and the amount of material to be removed, removed or reused on the site. So that information is typically included in the plan set, and I think that we should resolve, um, the setback distances. The board has selected the R half acre or quarter acre, um, tonight. And, um, I did prepare for the board a notice of intent to be lead agency. I can hold that until the information is submitted, a revision of the E A F with that detail and the plan set. Um, and then circulating that. Uh, it is a thirty day polling, um, for folks to, um, support your lead agency status. Uh, and then we can move through the secret process as well. Um, I will also need, uh, new coverage calculation worksheets. Um, you did a great job on the driveway, Ralph, but we do need to look at the coverage for the lots, and each lot should have a coverage calculation worksheet. Um, again, a physical boundary, new marketing, the wetland. And the question about the shed on lot three, is that going to be removed?
Want to trigger the wetland permit?
Uh, and my last comment, uh, involves.
What's that?
Is it in the buffer of the shed?
In the buffer, yes.
That my last comment involves the existing lot line, which is going to be removed. When we do the zoning performance table, because this does involve the merging of two lots or the re subdivision of the property. We typically identify those two existing lots. And, uh, identify existing developments, the setbacks are in those two existing lots, and then kind of transition to they will be remo, that line will be removed. That line will also need to be shown on the plan, on this plan.
Yeah.
And that's it.
Um, it seems to me that we should probably hold off on the notice until we have that information. Uh, I don't think we'll have any other jurisdiction jumping in ahead of us, um, on this. So I think we should have the, the information and, and, and take it from there.
The, the shed question, um, if it is removed, it would require a wetland permit? And that can be just rolled into this process?
Could you lift it with a helicopter, or, I mean, you know? I would say yes, but, you know, just to.
I, I believe, I believe it, I'm likely to get played forward with it, but.
I, yeah, why don't you see if it has historical significance? But yeah, that's, I'm teed over.
Okay. Okay. Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Uh, Bob, you had some comments?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Um, obviously one has been discussed, uh, obviously it's the most important thing in my eyes, the driveway's got to be determined where the sight line is. Uh, once you do that study, uh, that's critical, I have a funny feeling I might have to move to the north of it. Because right now it's cutting across private property, which is really not a good thing to the south, so we'll see what, how that comes into action, that's number one. I would highly recommend applicants, as you're, I'm sure he's doing it right now, perform additional D T H S D test holes and percolation rates. These are a lot of the original items they've done, and does not correlate with the onsite wastewater treatment areas they show on this plan. So I would highly recommend they get those in as soon as they could, show it to the board. At least have the county witness the preliminary ones that approve them. Uh, three, four, five and six are really things that are going to be coming down the bike once they submit more stormwater, but these have to do with the maintenance access, uh, and associated easements. Uh, with the pipe, there's going to be quite a few easements, it's going to be like Brady one, there's going to be probably a common access season, which is going to be memorialized, which is going to have the utilities in it. The drainage, because all this drainage is maintained by the property owners, uh, the town will be responsible for that. Uh, this has private septic, this has also wells, right, Ralph? So there's going to be no responsibility of the town out here, so those agreements are important, but we'll look at by, um, the town council. That's number three, uh, four, that'll be coming, I guess, down the bike route when you go to D E P, and sort of, that's more that. Four and five really are critical with the stormwater basin. Uh, you really have to show the aquatic patches in there, the safety patches. I believe it's going to make that area, that you showed Brady, a little bit bigger, more impact, so you might want to keep that in mind, that's four and five. Uh, six, it's basically a declaration of easements for common driveway, including drainage over across lots two, three and four. Uh, seven, last but not least, obviously, because this disturbs more than two acres, this is in the D E P territory. Uh, the stormwater pollution prevention plan will be required by D E P under chapter eighteen of the rules regulations for subsection eighteen thirty nine. So, uh, be prepared for that, because they, um, are stickler when it comes to the stormwater relate. And obviously, my last paragraph is, and if the planning board is inclined to approve this, a much more comprehensive review will be done in association with comments during the subsequent minutes. For the SWIP stormwater board maintenance agreements, subsection sightlines, I would recommend construction sequence, which is critical. Uh, in as controlled, common driveway maintenance agreements, site proven cost estimates, associated inspection fees, informed bonds, maintenance bonds for the work of subdivision itself. And those are my comments for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Uh, one other thing about the, the driveway layout, one of the concerns or questions I have is, we have a driveway that's parallel with one twenty eight. And very often when you have that at night, you can have headlights that can be confusing traffic, so I think in addition to the sightlines, you need to work on something that's going to buffer, uh, those lights from the roadway, whether it's, you know, solid fencing or vegetative buffers. Uh, but I think it's something that we really need to look at, um, that could be very confusing to, to motorists.
Uh, not an issue, we will definitely have a full blown landscaping, uh, design and plan for this. Uh, the roadway is a significant amount, the, the new driveway, common driveway is lower than the one twenty eight, but we will have screening, and we will show it.
Yep. Okay. Dennis, your comments?
Thank you, Bob. Something I made in conversation, I'll try to go over them, uh, if plan general comments is something that's a, that's a carryover, not, not a big deal. Uh, the difference between the conventional, uh, subdivision and conservation subdivision seems to be a difference of about forty feet. Trees, uh, would be remaining if they weren't ahead with the conservation subdivision as it sits now. Sir, I remember you mentioning, uh, with respect to the second comment, uh, so the stormwater treatment, obviously there's a, a difference. Uh, again, I'm not qualified to say the significance of that difference, but obviously instead of having every lot dedicated to its own subsurface system, there's going to be a uh, stormwater treatment pond on individual lot, taking care of everyone, so that's up to you guys to, to vet, as to if this is approved and carries out, obviously, there's different responsibilities going forward to, you know, maintenance and monitoring of that, but that's one thing I just wanted to point out. Uh, as far as the tree removal, uh, I just noticed like a hair slash over, um, a tree, and I tried to describe it as just west of tree number ninety five, so I'm just curious if that's being removed or not. There were a tree of heavens, I saw that you were going to leave, it looks like there's nine in total, you're proposing to remove three. I have no issue if you want to remove all nine, uh, tree of heavens, uh, after this, I probably saw it in Newcastle last year. Uh, and then you just described that, uh, you know, obviously, uh, I didn't expect the, the tree to be present, because there is a lot that's still hanging out there, especially with the, the roadside and the driveway. Um, Sabrina, you mentioned, and I know you're familiar with courtesy of the prior community, but if you can prove that, you know, you have some sort of penalty in addition. Uh, for this one, especially in the environmental protection, normally district, it's a, it's a big deal for sure, and that's all for my comments, thank you.
Okay, um, I have one other comment, if you could, if you can, like, what about on lot, um, not four, not five, but three and four, maybe two. You know, you've, you've got areas set, uh, set aside for pools, uh, those are in pretty steep areas. Unless you are going to apply for those at this point, I would like you to take those off in that. I hate when they're on there, that gives the real estate brokers this idea that the pool has to go there, this pool is automatically done, the planning board are looking at it, no, we haven't. That will require steep slope applications, and those are pretty steep. Um, whether it's appropriate or not for a steep slope, uh, I don't know, you'd have to consider with an application, so I would take those off. So we don't have any misgivings in terms of, uh, marketing or understanding when people come in and say, I have that as a matter of right, it was on the map. If, if you wish to, then you've got to include that in your steep slope application now. Uh we'd like to include it. Okay, so, mine is weak information.
Well, all that information is included in what was given as far as the uh matrix and everything.
Is, do we have the cut and fill information on it?
It should be, um if not, you'll have it.
Okay.
But those are intended to be built.
Okay, so um and do will those be intended to be built by the builder now?
Sure, yes.
Okay, alright, so include that and we'll 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 put that into consideration then, okay?
Chairman, can I say something?
Karen. Sure.
Um Ralph, I would imagine you've been a good old pool and a pool area and the patios and walkways, all in with the stormwater as well?
Correct.
As well as the coverage requirements.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. And and as we always do with pools, let us know where you're going with this pool equipment. Uh and what you're gonna do in terms of maintenance of pools, drainage of the pools, if at all, during the winter months. Again, it would be draining into a wetland, so we would wanna know about this.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else, questions?
No, I asked mine.
Okay, alrighty.
I give Ralph enough.
Yep. Good, we'll see you soon.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Appreciate it.
I'm curious.
Yes, Dick.
Um I like the one entrance, I think that's good. And I'm I'm still concerned about speeding on the main highway.
Yep.
Is there any way we can get the county or the state to make sure that there's a slow zone in there? Until that when they, you know, they speed along at sixty miles an hour, they'll have to slow down. Um you know, because of the entrance.
Well, it's it's actually a DOT road, it's a state highway, so we'd have to actually deal with the state DOT on this. I don't think it's a county, so I don't know what they have in terms of mechanisms that might be available, but certainly the applicant can speak to them and see what they might do. Or they might do nothing, but um you can certainly ask. I mean, I I think Dick's point is, and we've heard from Bob on this before, it is uh you know, the speed limit is posted or whatever, but it's it's almost irrelevant to what the actual speed is.
Yeah, I mean, we can we can bring it up to them, I I suspect that they will do nothing about it, um it's an enforcing issue at that point.
Yes.
And it's tough for us, it's really a big challenge. We can bring it up.
You can bring it up too much.
The actual posted speed limit is forty five.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Alright, thank you.
Good point, Dick, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Move over to another place where the sight line isn't that good.
Yeah. Okay, our next item is uh informal area, our first swing at the Land Kittle Road LLC, Kittle House, uh Land Kittle Road. Uh this is an application for a developing plan approval, um tree removal permit, steep slope permit, uh for renovation on the uh I broke it.
Evening again, Brad, sports, there are assignments, we represent the applicant. Um the large crowd tonight, I'm gonna introduce uh Scott and Chris Lee Praise, uh the owners and their son Jackson. Um long time shop of our residents, and you have the whole gang from ground up architects to project architect, um and landscape designers, as well as J M C engineering, um as well as a bunch of folks from Kittle House. So I promise not everyone is speaking tonight, but we do have a full detailed presentation that we're excited to share. This is all about modernizing and improving uh the existing Kittle House facility to truly make it a first rate restaurant inn and banquet space. We're not looking to expand the facility, it's about taking the existing facility and making it better, safer and more community friendly. Um and and not only we're not expanding, we're actually reducing the number of seats overall. And one other notable feature I wanna mention right up front is the removal of eleven parking spaces off of the driveway entrance, which has always been a kind of a thorn in the neighbor's side all these years, so just one small example of making this a more community friendly um site. So we have a bunch of drawings to show you, we're excited to present um site plan, renderings, and I'll throw it over to Dick Kent, so we'll offer board through the proposals.
Bob, good evening.
Thank you, Brad. Sorry, I broke that. You break our footage, you don't break food, it's just like. I'm I'm gonna uh go through some um images that we did not submit, but I think it'll be helpful for the board just to understand, you know, what what is here now, what we're proposing. Um a a big part of what we're doing for the architecture is um our firm is doing the architecture as well as the landscape architecture. So a big part of the building architecture is uh we're really doing a lot of interior renovations, which I know is not your purview, but um and we're phasing a lot of that, but on the exterior, we're doing in addition to the uh banquet hall on the lower level in the back. And there's also Amy's Garden, which historically is on the right there, uh everyone's probably been there. Uh wearing a pergola and a patio area there, to to where there already exists some uh dining and cocktail events happen there. So we can go to the next one. These are just some areas of what exists there today. You can see down on the lower level, I'm sure everyone's familiar with the glass atrium down there. Uh and there's a sort of a temporary tent that's been there for quite some time. But um the glass atrium is in disrepair. It needs to be fixed, it needs to be actually torn down, just because it's 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 not in good shape. Uh and that's where the addition we're proposing is gonna go, if you continue. Uh this is just from the other side, showing you a little bit better view of Amy's Garden. Uh we're we're not changing it, the the wine cellar is is actually below that, that exists in this building. Uh so we're building on top of a a concrete roof that has earth on top of it already.
And the back of the building faces which direction, north, south, east, west?
Uh east.
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 Okay, so we're looking at the eastern side. Sun.
Yes, in the back, yeah, yeah.
We're in the southeast corner.
Yeah.
We're southeast corner this view.
Yep, yeah.
Thank you.
Um so now if we go to some of the next slides, which are the proposed, this is just sort of taking what we would like to do and and putting it into an existing context, so uh now we're, you can see at the bottom of the screen is the 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 main entrance to the Kittle House. That's the existing parking court in front, the parking court is actually gonna be smaller in size to add more green space around it. Um it's it's kind of very oversized the way it is now, and it's a lot of the problems of parking on this site are there's no stripes, there's a lot of pavement that's been in disrepair, uh it it's it's difficult to find this a a spot sometime. So part of these improvements were were adding more uh parking towards the front or the main entry of of the building. Um and then you can see a little bit in the back on the upper left there, that's where the addition is is proposed to go. And then on the left, you can see where Amy's Garden is uh and we're building uh pergola with some patio um uh below it as well.
Where's the valet lawn parking in this drawing?
Uh all the way at the bottom there, that's all the way across uh that where that's where the head is now, and that's where the gravel parking is.
Where the head is. Okay.
Um we go to the next slide, it's just a different view. Uh this is it from the back, so you can see to the lower left is where that valet um parking is located. And then to the right of that is is sort of overflow parking where if there is a large event, they do park uh down in that area. Uh and it this this is a sort of loop that you can see it in your plans, but um the valets can kind of loop around in a circle this whole property, uh as well as emergency apparatus. Uh this you get a better view of the addition in the back. So the footprint of that addition is very similar to the footprint of the existing glass atrium. We're just sort of changing the shape of it to make it more user friendly for events. Um and it's got a little bit of a taller ceiling uh to make it more marketable. We keep going. This is from the other side, uh we're also enhancing a lot of the landscaping throughout, which, you know, uh when our we get to the landscape architecture drawings, uh Jeff Share, our landscape architect, can elaborate more on that. Keep going, this is sort of some ground views of like, this is for instance, the front, looking at Amy's Garden and uh the 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 new landscaping that we're proposing, and you can see a little bit of the pergola, you know, through the trees. Keep going, this is your a daytime view of how that's uh gonna look. And then a nighttime view of that as well. And then the the next slide shows the addition in the back, which is very complimentary to the existing architecture that's there. It's stucco, uh French doors, we are gonna have transoms, it's a little bit taller ceiling uh to to make it a uh a much more inviting uh dance floor. Um a van can fit there better and and also have some tables seating for banquet events. And uh keep going, that's just a a different three quarter inch, uh a three quarter view of uh of that new addition. This is just for context, this was the nineteen ninety seven site plan that the planning board last saw. I think Bob was here, but I don't know if anybody else was here when that happened.
Thank you so much, Karen.
It's over two so far, isn't it?
Yeah, I broke your podium and I insulted Bob. Um anyway, the thi- this was, this plus a resolution, I believe there was a resolution that was attached to it. Uh so you'll see a lot of documents in our submission that compare what we're doing to sort of the size of what was approved previously. If you continue. One more. And I can bring up Jeff Share as our landscape architect, he can walk you through um all of these drawings, which they they pretty much are self explanatory i- in the the title of them all, but this one starts with the existing, correct?
Yep, good afternoon, good evening, board, uh happy to be here, Jeff Share with land uh landscape architect with ground up architects on behalf of Kittle House. Um I think they've done a nice job summarizing, um but just to walk you through quickly, uh this uh drawing here shows in red the existing pavement as it is today. Um and then there's a dotted uh dashed blue line, um that shows the resolution, the nineteen ninety seven resolution areas. Um and if you go to the next page, um you'll see that we're still working within the same boundaries of the um the blue dotted lines, um that was originally approved. Um but I think that there's a lot that um is further improved in this plan, and that's really the story here. Um so if you follow me from the left hand side of the page, um coming into the entry, uh we really wanted to set up a nice elegant entry to the restaurant, um to give you a sense of arrival, a landing point, um and that is the courtyard um that largely exists today, um it is oversized, um so you kind of get lost in the sea of pavement. So we thought um if we shrink it a little bit, we can make it a bit more interesting and uh at the same time um define it with landscaping and some uh landscape walls. And it just, and maybe, you know, maybe a change of pavement. Um and so what that does is gives you a sense of arrival for the restaurant, for the um not only the inn but the restaurant. Uh I'm sorry, not only the restaurant but the inn as well. You can go left, um which is up the page here to a parking lot, um that would be improved, uh and that would be for restaurant and inn as well. We're a little further, sorry. Um but so that wraps around the inside of the kitchen, that's the northern part of the building. Um but it's really just a continuation of lot improvements and um these are gonna be the more desirable and safer spots for accessing the restaurant um at all times of the day. Um so that's where you see that going on, and then if you go down to the lower side of the page, uh we continue that uh you know, preferred parking, um and the darker red there is, you'll see is where we're we need to expand um and to create uh parking that that meets today's codes backing up.
That's where you'll have a substantial amount of cut, uh right in the southwest corner?
Correct. Yep, and um so there's a a benefit of putting it in that area, um we'll have, we'll we'll go over further with uh civil engineering as well, but um aesthetically and to the neighbors, there's a benefit, that's where the the garage, uh I'm sorry, the entry um parallel parking spots in the driveway would be relocated to there, and they can be front on um parking spots, but the headlights will be sunk in and blocked to the neighbors by the wall, and they'll be, that's where we're doing some pretty additional heavy screening, um to make it more woodland-y and um to introduce some evergreens in there, um so it'll be screened from the neighbors there as well. Um then you continue around Amy's Garden um into what we're calling sort of the, this is gonna be the the banquet uh motor court. Um we'll have parking there as well, but um it was just a nice arrival space for a separate um event, essentially, so if you're having a wedding or a an event down there, you kind of have your own garden entry from the lower level that's accessible.
So that will be limited and and designated as such or and restricted to uh the banquet area?
Um that might be an operation question, but uh you know, i- i- it's flexible essentially, so.
Yeah, okay.
Um but what it does is uh it gives a nice parking area that exists today, but we're also reducing the pavement in that area. Um and what what that will do is separate the cars from an outdoor wedding or an outdoor event um with a garden, and it's kind of like the bridal room, right? Um and that continues on a straight access down to the lower level, which would be valet parking. Um and that would be intended to be gravel. And then uh you know, to the to the deeper red there, and then as you go up the page a bit, we get into our reinforced lawn parking. Um and you'll see that our thirty one overflow spaces are still within um the same blue dash line from the nineteen ninety seven approved plan, um and we get a hundred and fifty four parking spaces. Um whereas previously up to that, actually up to that next slanted line, um that's where they had a hundred and fifty two parking spaces, and then beyond that, on the curve, there was an additional twelve, which brought you brought you to one sixty four total. Um but the reality is that that slope's so great that it, you couldn't fit cars there if you wanted to. There'll probably be some more, you know, a little bit of room, but on paper we have one fifty four, which in that same space they had one fifty two.
Will you still have the other entrance, uh emergency or otherwise, in the southeast corner?
Yeah, I believe we're keeping, yeah, that that whole on Anandale, that whole circle is, i- if you can scroll down to the page, we're sort of tightening and gaining some green space um to around that quarter. Um but it's still accessible and it'll be open. But it's it's, I think it's just improving the site in general, it's it's um it's adding green spaces where it really matters. Um and you can get some nice definition between parking and um restaurant or banquet or inn use.
Can we look at the the northern part uh again?
Mm-hmm.
Where we're putting parking in there, can you, my uh pointer's not working.
Where that red is.
Yeah, the red is, what what we're doing there.
Yeah, so um right now the it exists as gravel, um and there's a fence kind of halfway in that parking spot.
Mm-hmm.
Um we're, so we'll need to um fill and do a retaining wall on that side, but they'll, it that will be fenced and planted as well. There's already a significant existing buffer there, um but it would be fenced, um and then but it'll be all level, um and I believe it's five percent uh ridge. Uh it's all at a a reasonable navigable pitch.
And that's that's additional parking up there.
Yeah, that's all, that's intended for restaurant and inn.
So what I find interesting is that the space between those parking spaces, I mean, I know this is not necessarily to scale, but if you compare those parking spaces, the difference, the distance between those parking spaces and you look to the southeast corner where you're doing the cut, it seems that those parking spaces are very tight in terms of backing out and maneuvering. Here, it's almost like trucks can do it, uh whereas down the southeast corner, it looks to be very tight, even go down a little bit further.
I believe they're all twenty four foot wide?
Well, you see how they back out?
I can check it.
The drive aisle, the drive aisle here is much narrower.
Much more narrow, and then where you have that green space coming out with the the garden, i- it just doesn't seem to be sufficient, you have double parking here, so it seems to be very, very tight there. I wonder whether or not you will need a little bit more cut uh in this area, and maybe a little bit less cut on the other.
Yeah, I'll take a look, I know we we took a careful look at that and it all was within twenty four feet of backing out space, but I'll I'll have a second look.
Okay, if that's twenty four, then the other seems to be much more than twenty four.
Yeah.
Which would suggest that we don't need to cut as much toward uh one seventeen.
As much. Yeah, and all the all the spaces, um at least in these areas, that's not designated as overflow, these are all nineteen uh nine by eighteen. And then the end spaces are ten feet wide to give a little bit more generous uh room for getting in and out of your cars. And then we have five handicap spaces here.
Where are those?
Uh so you'll see the striped parking HC five right by Amy's garden, and then we have four in the main motor court.
Okay.
I don't know if that northerly parking is that wide because of emergency apparatus? Turn around, was was there something with that?
I was just confirming, it's all the same, twenty-four.
Okay.
Okay, again, maybe not, it's just a sketch, it may not be the scale.
Yeah, I'll have a look at that, and then these are all valet spots, they're seven by twenty. But the, so we wanted to keep that reinforced lawn because if you have a wedding there, you you wanna look over um green. And so we wanted to keep it open to the shared views of the golf course or country club golf course. Um, yeah, and that's kind of, for the most part, uh everything with parking and those changes, um the next couple sizes, I guess we'll go down to the landscape drawings. Um so this is a, the parking count, um it shows that we show one fifty-four uh in this area and originally we had one fifty-two. Um the next one is the tree removal permit. Um so we're getting rid of a total of forty-nine trees uh on site. Um and they're all due to the need for expanding and improving parking. Um, there's a couple that uh we're trying to save and we're doing our best, but I think that uh we're we're exceeding in the uh improvement plan or the planting plan in um the amount of trees that are going in, I believe there's um a hundred and eighteen proposed. Um and then if you include the shrubs, an additional sixty-three, uh we've got eight to one, and we need to replace a hundred and two trees total. Um, so we have a pretty vigorous planting plan before you. Um, and we'll do as much as we can to save as many large trees as possible, which I think we've been pretty sensitive to in specific areas. Um and then improvements to the neighbor on the hillside and in the woodland. Um I think we're adding a lot of evergreen there to for additional screening, which will be uh an improvement, a lot of improvement. Um and then site plan wise, uh this is the lighting plan. Um it's a quick lighting plan, we don't have photometrics for you tonight. Um but the intent is uh to light it safely, but don't overlight it. And um we'd like to keep all of the proposed lighting at twenty-seven hundred K um and within dark sky compliance. Uh right now, the parking lots at night is a little bit difficult to navigate and we wanted to improve that. Um and I think that we will be able to do so. And then this is the planting schedule that shows uh all of the planting species, the intended size, sizes and um I know we we got a a detailed memo from uh Dennis, uh thank you for that. And uh we'll take a look at uh suggestions and in caliber sizes and heights and all that. And then that's it for landscaping. Uh I don't know if civil wants to come up. Um but yeah. I'll hand it back over to Brad or and answer any any of y'all's questions, thank you so much.
Sure. Okay, questions from board members? Well, I guess why don't we take the memos first from the, yeah, Sabrina, uh you had you had some comments?
Yes, uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um this is a type two action under the state environmental quality of the U Act. Um my second comment involves the lower level, um you know, it's clear that there's an expansion of a lower level by seventeen square feet. But there's appears to be an area below the tasting room, is that um i- is that area being expanded as well? It was hard to tell and you know, I would like to ask that the site plan include layout of the existing building foundation and a clear demarcation as to where the expansions begin and end. Um there is also a table on on one of the on on the site plan, um that has the uh main level and the lower level block out. It's really hard to compare the line work and confirm confirm the table areas. So if it can be identified so that we can con- confirm the areas and the appropriate coverage uh can be calculated. Um the coverage calculations indicate an increase in building coverage of three hundred and ninety-three square feet. So the the, you know, in the sense of the building expansion, it's not a large expansion. Um the building coverage plan should be amended to actually include the measurements of each area and demarcate where the three hundred and ninety-three square feet is coming from. Um and just in overall, the building coverage will be increased from an existing eight thousand three hundred and twenty-four square feet to eight thousand seven hundred and seventeen square feet. Um when it comes to development coverage, there's an increase of two thousand two hundred and fifty-six square feet to the driveway and parking areas. Uh nine hundred and sixty-three square feet to walkways and a decrease in eight hundred and two square feet due to removal of the tennis court. Um the tennis court was removed, um it wasn't permitted and it was removed, so we really shouldn't be included as part of a credit for removal here. Um so so we should adjust that a little bit. Um. The plan includes indication of areas that are to be improved, dimensions of all areas on the plan should be provided and include areas in the legend which list green space and terraces and walkways. You have the dumpster area is a green space, but the dumpsters are sitting on a pad, so that's not green space. So just kind of identify how you're treating that. Um, and and add the additional details. Um, the previous site plan had very specific information regarding the parking requirements. Uh the lower level restaurant um had five thou- uh had one space per every seventy-five square feet, a hundred and fifty-two total spaces were required for the restaurant. The guest rooms, um there were twelve of them and it was one space per guest room. The total parking spaces that were required are a hundred and sixty-four spaces. The site plan further noted that all spaces were to be, you know, the the specific sizes, nine feet by twenty feet and then spaces ninety-one to one sixty-four can be reduced to seven feet by twenty feet. So these notes all need to be incorporated on your site plan. Um a question came up that the parking calculation table for the existing and proposed uses needs to be revised. The existing table indicates that there were fourteen spaces allocated to guest rooms. Does that mean that you have an additional two guest rooms uh on the facility? Or are you just asking for more parking for the guest rooms? So you guys need to confirm that. Um. The note on the parking count also talks about utilization peaks, um at approximately two hundred and fifty patrons on event days. And event days include private holiday gatherings during which time normal restaurant operations are limited. If you could uh provide more definitions as to what it means to limit the operations, that would be helpful. Um, and then again, just incorporate all of these parking notes on the site plan. Um in addition, the days and hours uh that the use will be in operation should also be included, there's a note on the site plan. There should be a schedule for deliveries um and garbage removal. The hours of the lighting, I know you're introducing more lighting, um it is limited lighting, but you should have hours um listed previously. Uh lighting was to remain on one hour after the close of business, so you need to reconfirm that that is the case. Um and just a a note that all of the previous notes on that site plan, that site plan that you showed from nineteen ninety-seven or ninety-nine, they all need to move back on this site plan.
I have a question. You're uh you're proposing a generator?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
On the north the north side, yeah.
And will it be gas run?
Yes. Uh yes, it will, Richard.
Usually the generators, um your gas run, and that has to be worked out. Uh because the generator will work better when, you know, if it's electrical, then I don't care. It'll just, you know, go out if all the other light lights go out. I'm just saying that and and if it is a generator, make sure that it's made in America, not assembled in America. Other than that, I appreciate that.
We will also need, we will also need to understand uh the noise associated with the generator, how often it needs to be tested and what the in in ensure that the noise of the generator is within the noise allowances in the code for that generator.
Uh yeah, of course.
Well, I'm concerned a little bit about, you know, what you buy. Um so I just said what I just wanted to say. Is that you have a, you're gonna buy a generator, make sure it's made in America, not just assembled in America. Okay, excuse me, I gotta go someplace for about five minutes.
Okay. So um just to clarify, I wasn't quite sure of the answer, is it a gasoline or propane gas? Is propane gas, okay, yeah, good.
There's a already a a fairly substantial gas service to the building.
And I know, I think it said it was going to be at sixty-seven decibels um when it runs?
Yes.
Uh what is that, what's that acquainted? Uh I I I always forget.
Roughly, I mean, I'm. I I roughly, I I'm told it's like a dishwasher, like like a loud dishwasher or something like that, I I I would have to look it up though.
Okay. Jeff, would you happen to know offhand? Just to give some context.
I I could Google right now, so.
We actually have a comparison table we used previously when folks have wanted to cite generators, I can pull it out for the board.
Right, and 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 again, it it the distance is also important to the neighbors.
Yeah, sixty-seven decibels, it obviously depends on, you know, the the decibels are always measured from a distance or whatever you're gonna generate.
A dryer, so.
Uh they do have uh they do have a circle on one of their drawings, they have a circle that shows like fifty-eight feet.
Yes.
And I'm not sure, I haven't, I I don't believe they've submitted the generator specs. Uh but I'm assuming, you know, just based on that that's, you know, the the decibel level at that distance. Um you know, when you look at things like elevations, is a generator higher, is a generator set down? But um you know, sixty-seven decibels, answer question, it's not very loud.
Right, okay.
You know, when you get it to like a ninety, that's very loud, um but sixty-seven is not lateral. I think like fifty-five is like a, is like a normal conversation, so it's a little bit louder than that, the dishwasher analogy is probably very, very close.
Uh with my turn.
So sixty-seven is like an animated uh conversation here at the planning board.
Yeah, yeah.
Um and I think you've already got uh protective fences around it too, right? I mean, it should baffle the 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 noise a little bit more too, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think we would just ask that they submit uh submit the specs for the the generators, or as long as goes, given, you know, they have different different suppression levels, one, two, and three. Uh you know, this, I'll leave that to them, I'll leave that to them. They will, they will, they will, as soon as goes, uh you know, for 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 decibel property line or maybe even the proper line, but anyway. And then just, you know, just make sure that whatever you choose for your uh uh your soundproofing is, um you know, the 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 generator needs to move as much as go after that.
Right, but the testing protocol is something that's.
Yeah, of course, of course.
Yeah, we we need that too, normally it's like, you know, they test like once on one additional per whatever, half an hour, once a week, half an hour. And then, you know, they'll do like a full load test every one year, one year to plan, I'm gonna size it.
I I think the larger the generators, you do have options, uh optionality of not once a week, but once every couple months or something like that.
That's fair. Yeah. Okay, great. Okay, uh Bob, you had, Jeff, you had some comments?
I did, um. Sorry, I opened up another screen. So most of the comments were stormwater related. Um we are in the East Hudson watershed, so there's some requirements as far as um stormy, I mean, I I I got the submission that they're that the they want us to see how the board reacts with the plan. And then based on, you know, what they get, what they want, the the stormwater, the stormwater is gonna be highly dependent on on what is the what is the root areas and and such. Um, there's a lot of work that you need to get done with the stormwater. Uh one of the the bigger concerns was they have a um the catch basins and on the Jamesy Plan, which I don't know if it's in the middle of it, the Jamesy Plan, um C two hundred to the collection, uh catch basins with piping and storm down Addendale, which um that that's not gonna be acceptable just based on, it's gonna increase flow rate down though, which we can't, which we can't obviously do. Um, so there's there's gonna be some sort of uh attenuation to happen or something, uh it's a P two, C two hundred. I'm not sure if it's gonna be troubling, yeah. So it shows on the on the right, there's stormwater, I'm sorry, there's a a complex, there's a sort of imperturbative system. There's no design, um there's no, there's no really design that was submitted with that. I think it's just sort of a placeholder for where they wanna put it. Um, there's no, again, there's no sizing involved in it or or design, we would need to do part tests and with the part tests and things like that. Um, so again, there's there's a lot of work that you need to get done with the stormwater. Um, you know, as far as the other stuff, uh technical, it's really, it's all, it's all technical, nothing that, I I don't think it's anything that's gonna be um uh a deal breaker, but a lot of it can't get hashed out until they have a site plan, uh you know, approved site plan in time.
Right. Jeff, we talked about this earlier, uh I had some questions about um trying to get information in terms of uh uh a number of things that Sabrina alluded to as well. With the potential change in the number of guestrooms, I don't know if we have that change or not, uh but the expansion of operation and the hours, we're not sure what all this means. What are we doing in terms of uh septic? Um this site has had in the past, distant past, I guess, uh a very um a difficult history with the septic. And um I I just wonder with the new regulations that we have for septic control and et cetera, uh what we're looking at and making sure that, I I don't know, do we have sufficient expansion? Whereas the expansion uh set forth is or expansion doesn't apply to this kind of a of an operation. Um so it would be great to have at least the history of the uh septic history in terms of what the county has done over the years, in terms of what they've granted, what they've required, um and and why. So I think that would be important, I think that would be important to know in terms of whatever's going on now with new operation, if any changes are required. Uh but we would really need to know this, it it, you know, obviously to for those who've been around a while, this this was always a problem in this place many years ago.
We we did request a letter of no objection from the Department of Health as one of our comments.
Well, okay, that's fine, but I think we should also have, uh you know, uh have that more granular uh history to understand for our file.
Of course, of course. But we wanna make sure that, we wanna make sure that the septic is uh indicated now and not gonna have any issues in the future.
Right, right. Okay, Dennis, you had some uh comments?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh yes, so um and I had, first one I discussed with Ken, just, you know, this is how it goes uh with respect to the tree codes, so I know shortly after purchase, uh I walked around, it was just a tree life and uh I included that tree removal permit at the back of the memo, so those were, you know, uh obviously you could look at the table, I didn't require a replacement for any of those trees, those really, you know, had to be sort of tended to in terms of just, you know, air condition relative to the operation, but uh as the code states, um you know, because that permit was issued, uh you need to basically sort of wait a year until, um you know, another tree removal permit, you know, could be issued, especially for a project that is this packed into, so that's just a tiny issue.
So that would be October twenty-five, right? Would you assume that would be considered?
Yes. Uh, I went through um the plan and, you know, I sort of had to break it down into the, you know, into the four areas that they uh showed, you know, not only just to sort of uh organize and assemble uh my own thoughts, but I think it um, you know, obviously you're looking at, they're looking at this as a comprehensive plan, but I just figured it might be helpful to sort of break this down or, you know, sort of segment it. And honestly, uh you know, with respect to the trees that I was looking at, um you know, the courtyard area, obviously that planting area that, you know, a lot of hard surface, vertical, some horizontal, so so those trees I wasn't as as concerned about with respect to sort of the um aesthetic and character of, you know, kind of what is the Kittle House and what was was existing there. So I just went through that uh summary uh with respect to the three remaining areas, which I described as that southwest steep slope parking area that they're putting in with the southwest steep slope parking area that they're putting in with the tree planting island, uh a northern parking area that they illustrated, and then the, you know, what I look to be predominantly, the uh the landscaping plan due east of the uh northern parking area. So the trees that you see on the tables that I uh included in the memo are basically a breakdown of those uh those three areas. And, you know, we summarized, or I summarized the impacts to sort of show, based on those three areas, what the numbers of trees that you're looking at, native versus non-native and their uh and their diameters, so, you know, just to quickly fast forward, so so in conclusion, um that kind of, you know, sort of got filtered down to, so about fifteen parking spaces in the southwest steep slope area and implementing the uh landscaping plan, you know, six trees that came little to be equal, almost three hundred, you know, inches of diameter, and most all happened to be native trees, so if you're in that forty nine inch per tree diameter range, uh it 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 there's there's a magnitude there obviously, because that's a, you know, fairly large tree. I'm not saying ours clearly planted it, but you know, it's sold. So, you know, I understand that, you know, this was uh the 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 first um, you know, comprehensive proposal, uh but but there is, and I know that, you know, which is true, and I did provide it in my memo, that they are, you know, exceeding based on, you know, the code, the replanting requirements, the replacing, replacement requirements, you know, just based on the numerics, but there is provision in the code to, you know, sort of consider uh like an alternatives analysis to maybe preserve, you know, some of those trees, and and I think, you know, with respect to what this area is, you know, obviously they uh you know, have a very, very nice and, you know, robust uh landscaping plan, but, you know, I I I think those, you know, could be there, you know, uh as 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 part of that, obviously they, you know, to be supplemented, you know, they're they're heritage trees, you know, like, you know, from relative to the location, so uh that's why I just sort of went through that that exercise, and, you know, I even mentioned some of the some of the smaller trees that I saw, which wouldn't necessarily be regulated, but, you know, um you know, a little vine cleanup, you know, you can maybe leave some of the crab apples, you know, something, something to that effect. The only tree of note that I had noticed was I did notice that American elm, you know, it was a twenty one inch diameter tree, and I didn't see a marking or a tag. Uh and relative to its location, it was unsure if it may or may not be removed, so that was just uh really the only clarifier when I was, you know, walking in the property and and looking at the trees. Um I'll I'll generally skip over the uh landscaping plan because they had summarized it. Uh and also too, which I just may mention, which I know I've done before, you know, there is, there is like rocky components out here, so just some of the larger caliber trees that they were proposing, um you know, it it it's 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 not the uh most inviting environment to to drop a new nutrient, so that's why I was suggesting, you know, if they're, you know, uh smaller trees may 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 work out better here, or if they're, you know, gonna have a heavy irrigation plan or, you know, care for that. Uh obviously, I happen to be out there during snow cover, so the deer prints, you know, basically um illustrated, you're gonna definitely want a debris protection for what you're uh for what you're planting, uh so I thought that was important to, you know, suggest. And then just with respect to the wetlands, so where you did have the wetland delineated, obviously there's that, there's an open end there between uh the flags that I illustrated, one and eleven, so I don't know if that's where the wetland ends, uh or if it continues, um but you didn't continue delineating, and and if so, um I guess we could live with that, but you should do like like sort of like a a brake line or, you know, a squiggle line, you know, something to indicate that, you know, the wetland continues. And just to the other side of that uh sport court that you guys had removed, so I know that there's a a daylighted pipe there, I'm not sure where where that flow comes from, but it's obviously been uh coursing for a while, because they definitely formed this defined channel and it was, you know, wet one of the days that I went to visit, and that definitely directly feeds that wetland down slope. So if you look at the definition of water course, that would need to be included as part of uh sort of the wetland shown, and there would be a buffer associated with that, which would also have to be appearing on the plan. Um so that's probably gonna require some, you know, additional fieldwork and and survey to uh to put that in. And I did provide, you know, color photos just to show you uh that area, and it's interesting, you know, having these photos, because everything else is snow cover except where the water happens to flow down, so it kind of shows that it's some, you know, it's happening.
Is this an area that we have a one hundred foot buffer or one fifty?
Yes, yes, one hundred, it would be one hundred, so. Uh so I just kind of glossed on it, because they did cover some of it frankly, but uh that would be my uh comments for this memo, Sharon.
So Dennis eyeballing it, uh is it, in your opinion, I mean, without having the uh designations out in the field, eyeballing it, are there any areas that they're proposing activity that would fall within the buffer?
I I did like a measurement approximately, because the uh the GIS aerials still showed where the court was, so you were able to do it from the other side. Uh it looks like they may just miss courtesy of the northernmost parking area, it 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 may not be a consequence for it.
Okay. So again, you'll you wanna measure that back and make sure that we don't turn to that or avoid it, or if we do, then we have to look at it. Okay. Um okay, any questions, board members?
I'd like to go back to Dennis's memo, so Dennis, for some clarity, there are six trees, roughly fifty inches apiece, that are coming down to get fifteen parking spaces? Because I couldn't find those trees on the drawings, because I was looking for them.
Right, so what I what I did was, um they're basically, uh in that southwest corner, there's a a single wall that's going in after they've been cut.
Could we put up a plan that shows these trees, is that possible?
Great, we'll do that.
Yeah.
Here's the pointer, right there.
Yeah, it's not working. Mine's dead. Oh, now it's working. Why don't you do that for a second?
Dennis, I believe it's this area here.
Yes.
And this is, I believe, a fifty inch, and then there's two thirty plus or minus inch trees in here.
There's some big silver maple in the area.
And then, um so we have a wall going here, um we could take a look at some alternatives, um but I think we'll lose parking spaces in that area, um and then there's, because we're building that wall across, there's some additional grading, which is why it extends even.
And there's currently no parking there now?
Cur- yes, correct.
Well, it's parallel parking.
Yeah, it's, there's parallel parking along this wall, the kind of people fill in as they can in here on the on the slope.
Yeah.
Um and then in consequences, that this drive aisle becomes very narrow.
Yeah, it's very haphazard parking at the present time. But 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 one of the things that uh is important, I mean, in exchange for this, and maybe there's some other areas around the north side or whatever, maybe we change some of the valet parking. I think Greg and and Dennis are both saying that the code provides that to the greatest extent possible, we avoid taking down specimen trees.
Especially the fifty incher.
Oh, there's a bunch of them, yeah, so it's not a matter of, uh, you know, we sort of like you to do it, that's really what the code reads, so we we you really have to justify that we haven't, you know, looked at something else to uh to avoid uh taking those down.
Do we, do we, this is a question, this is one for you. I I I realize that a lot of the site work is being driven to make the parking better, right? And I know parking count is driven by code for the restaurant and for the uh the inn. But we do have an analysis saying that on the most critic, on the most intensive days, they have two hundred and fifty occupants, and average, you have two hundred occupants. Are we allowed to say, well, if they have two hundred occupants, maybe that's a hundred cars, and maybe there's thirty cars for employees, so maybe really they're operating at a hundred and thirty cars, so maybe we really don't need to pave one sixty, we only need to pave this. Is there a way where we have that latitude, where we can take, make more grass space and less hard space, and the grass space only really gets kicked in when you have those two fifty days? And when they have the normal operating two hundred days, maybe we don't even need those spaces, which lets us be flexible on areas over there.
Yep, good point.
That's what I'm kind of thinking. And that, I don't know if.
You would have to document that. You would have to document, you have the authority to do that, as long as the spaces, it's called, you can land bank, if you will.
But you have to work to do that, as long as the spaces, it's called, you can land bank, if you will.
Um but you have to have some sort of documentation regarding the number of spaces that are used. Again, we don't build parking lots for, you know, the Christmas shopping season.
Great.
Right? And so I think you raised a really good point, you do have the ability, because this is a um
And so I agree.
a non-conforming use in a residential neighborhood, and you you know, you look at the number of seats, you look at uh the banquet services, the bread, you know, the guest rooms. You can adjust the parking as long as if it is ever needed, it can be developed.
Mm-hmm. Well, this would actually be, uh I think Greg's point is, it's almost an active land, they uh uh parking uh
The lawn.
ar- areas, yeah, so is that where, banking number?
It sort of does that now, right?
Yeah.
There there is, there is flexibility, there is additional space when necessary. And I think you incorporate that into your plan, as to how much, you know.
So we're asking the applicant maybe, and I guess they're gonna come back and say, well, is that okay? Maybe we can do some re-fenagling of the layout, lose some of those nice paved spots, but maybe save some of those those critical trees and just park.
Expand the spillover.
Expand the spillover.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, Greg, just to clarify, are you saying if we technically land bank that, are you saying in those areas where those specimen trees are, then I want us to find other areas?
Other.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think in your grassed area, perhaps expanding that, your grassed area now, the current spillover area, maybe making the spillover area a little bit larger?
Yeah. We we could.
So like if you, if you had over there existing eight, eight spots, I'm just picking a number, and then you're doing all that work, you're gonna get fifteen more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, maybe you do half the work, you pick up four or whatever, we keep the big tree, your retaining wall's not as big, you save some costs, but that cost moves over to do some more grass planting, maybe, you know.
Yeah, well, we'll certainly study it, yeah.
Uh I just wanted to say, I I appreciate that comment, because we're not, we understand that there's significant trees here, and we're not trying to clearcut them, um specifically, there's one in the back that uh we've kept for that same reason, so.
Oh, the big one down the bottom of the page, yeah.
In the back, yeah, it's not a, I don't believe it's a native, it's, it is a maple, it might be silver maple maybe? I don't know the exact species, but off the top of my head, but um it's.
But it's a big tree.
It's a big tree. So it gives, it gives a sense of um history, right, or like oldness.
And that's why I was asking the direction if that big tree was shading your yard at all, but since it's to the east, maybe not so much.
It would shade in the north, it would shade in the north, um and kind of to the right side of this page and over the banquet hall.
That was my one big question.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Greg, we were just talking, we hear you, and we'll take a look at the actual demand from the operations, and if we could move some things around to save some trees, we'll go back and take a closer look.
Yeah, I I mean, I I did wanna note that the last time the parking was discussed was in nineteen ninety seven, uses have changed. There's there, the applicant is changing the facility to keep up with the the entertainment needs of today. You know, what does that look like in regards to parking?
Yeah, we'll take the lead from you on 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 your operational needs. The demand, yeah. Yeah, and by the same token. We don't wanna overpark, so we'll. No, exactly.
Yeah, right, great.
And I I think this Greg's idea of having a spillover, which is grass, is is really a very good one, because you guys wanna keep as much green, you're building all this green space, why not uh leave as much as possible? I I think, um I don't think it's that significant, but in the in the south uh west corner it is, where we have some uh impacted slopes, the same applies for slopes, obviously, as well. Try to avoid it uh to the greatest extent possible, and then if we can't, then we mitigate from there.
Correct.
Great. So we have a fair amount of work to be done, but uh I myself, I mean, I hope that the board members agree, I think this is an exciting uh project.
Yeah.
I think it's something that will really uh enhance the area and enhance the town, and uh wish you very well with it. Terrific, thanks for the initial feedback. Any any other questions or anything from board members? Okay. Great, we'll see you uh maybe soon, maybe not, but whatever. Good night to you with all the responses, thanks for the, thanks for the initial feedback, appreciate it, and uh good night. Alright, thank you, thanks, Greg. Okay, we go to our next item, this is Tracy, two eleven Crowton Lake Road, this is a, is an accessory apartment site application and tree removal permit for construction of an accessory apartment. I'll save your trees, Dennis.
Hello, everyone, Matthew Grant, Grandoff Architects, uh here on the map of uh Kimberly Tracy, uh two eleven Crowton Lake Road, um accompanied by Eric and Matthew, uh from Engineering, from Catazoni Engineering. Um we are proposing a one-story accessory structure to an existing residence. Um detached, uh it will contain a garage and a one store, and a uh a one-bedroom accessory apartment, uh no more than one thousand square feet. Uh the the site uh is two point four acre uh acres and a one-acre uh zoning district. Um proposed work does not, is all conforming in terms of uh building uh coverage, development coverage, along with uh the required setbacks for this zone. Um in addition to, uh we've cited this in this location, um it's approximately one hundred feet away, um as a buffer from the main residence. Uh it will require a subsurface uh sewage disposal system, uh which we have engineered, uh and also have Board Health approval for. Um we are utilizing the existing well on site. Um let's just zoom in here.
So you're gonna share the well with the existing home?
Correct.
We just consider the front yard to, for the front yard setback.
I'm sorry, this is your access here, this is your main road.
Okay, so that's the front yard setback right there?
That that's the front yard setback here.
Okay.
Uh there's a, there's an existing easement for the driveway, it shares, there's another residence right over here, uh the corner of it, it's like right in this location here.
So this is a, this is. So this is technically an accessory structure in the front yard?
Correct. Um in addition to uh the accessory apartment, there is a four hundred and forty square foot garage, uh two covered entrances and a proposed driveway. Um and also, uh you know, additional impervious in terms of paths uh to get down to the lower unfinished uh not habitable basement. Um let's just see here, um as mentioned.
When you say it's non-habitable, uh what are we doing to make it non-habitable, is it a crawl space?
It's six foot eights, it's a six foot eight ceiling height. And unfinished.
Okay, six eight's pretty tall.
Yeah, but seven foot is covered, quite a for habitable space.
Under windows?
No windows.
There you go.
Yeah.
Definitely need windows.
Yeah, the area downstairs will be utilized for for mechanical, etc.
Well, you should have windows on this, this is what what actually happens afterwards.
I have confirmed with the building inspector, um that the actual uh livable area is approximately nine hundred and fifty-four square feet.
Okay, great. Um in addition to, uh there is going to be uh twenty four trees removed, as uh Dennis uh mentioned in his memo. Um the the tree condition varies uh and 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 health, uh you know, from good to to poor. Uh we position this, you know, in this particular area to reduce the amount of trees uh in good health to be removed. Um that that's stated also uh in Dennis's memo as well. Um the function and use of the space, um this will be used as for uh uh Kimberly's mother. Um you know, she she needs a, her and her husband need this place, um they they currently have a place in in Florida. Um they'll be coming up, um they have a new family, you know, growing family, she'll be up a bit, um to help out, so. Um we have, as mentioned, we have Board Health approval, um and then we have, um and I know there was a bunch of technical questions regarding engineering, um et cetera, and obviously, we will address the the tree replacement uh with the replanting plan. Um I believe we need to maintain or ride ninety inch total diameter uh for replacement, and we will address those.
You had said that you're gonna tap into the existing well for this house. Do you, do these guys know the capacity of the water, can the, can the well handle two homes?
Well, we haven't tested the well.
Oh, yeah, but stand up and introduce yourself, sorry.
No, we haven't tested the well when we uh proposed a new well, uh at first. Uh the Board of Health mentioned that they won't allow a new well since serious municipal water on uh Crowton Lake Road.
Ah.
So you said because of that, we'll be able to. So you said because of that, we'll be able to use the well, if the well ever were to fail, then we'll have to tap into the municipal one, not all of the.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a Plan A and Plan B.
Sure. Yep. E R I K A V I L A.
John, are there any restrictions? Are there any restrictions, uh Greg raised the issue uh for an accessory building uh constructed in the front yard?
I have to take a look, I did, you know, we'd have to take a look at the zoning code, I don't have the top of my head, I don't.
Okay, so we'll take, we'll 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 take a look at that.
I'll take a look at the accessory structure, you know.
And can you tell us about neighboring homes, so we normally like to see the the drawings with the neighboring homes on there, so we have some sort of context in terms of the distance from new construction to existing neighbors. Yeah, I mean, next time around, you can just put ones on, yeah.
Oh, yeah, sure, there there's a residence
Right now, yeah.
Right here, and there is a residence all the way over here.
Okay.
And then across the street is the Shiva.
Mm-hmm, okay. Yep. That's fine, I mean, obviously you don't have to draw detailed sketches of the building, but just the distance from what you're, what you're proposing.
Yeah, yeah. Absolutely.
Okay, Sabrina, you had some comments?
I did, Mr. Chairman, um, in accordance with here, this two is a type two action, so no further environmental review is required. Um, the bold zoning requirements table uh notes a non-conforming side yard setback of seventeen point nine feet where thirty-five feet are required. So my question for you is if there was a variance, um, or if it is a P existing non-conforming use, but this should be footnoted in your zoning requirements table. Um, to confirm coverages, um, and sizes, the applicant should provide the area measurements regarding the space on drawing A one hundred and A one oh one. Um, there may be discrepancies in the coverage worksheet as to what is actually calculated on the plans, um, and we need to verify that. Um, I did note that I had requested from the building inspector to confirm the foundation for floor plans to assure that the apartment is a thousand square feet or less. Um, he did do that for me, um, and I got a note from him today that it was nine hundred and fifty-four uh square feet. Um, the application notes approval by the Westchester County Health Department for the subject system for the accessory use. Um, you guys should provide a copy of that approval to uh to the town, so it can include it as part of your application. And as I've noted, the tree removal permit lists twenty-four trees that are to be removed as part of the application. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, great. Uh Jeff, did you have any comments? You had comments, yes.
We did have a few comments, mostly digital marketing related, I think I was, uh, you know, mostly technical, um, that I just needed to make sure that, and they do, we did, um, when protests are performed, we just request that the air notes files, you can have uh one of our inspectors go out. Um, this is in the uh, this is in the uh, sorry, uh. This is, this is, he he's had some water cuts, so file N E O I, um, and again, we requested some, you know, to check some things, or request some data points, or stormwater management, and record, uh, nothing, uh, nothing too troubling.
Jeff, will this require any kind of referral to New York City D E P?
Uh, this one, I don't believe so. I don't believe so, the E P, no.
Okay. Alrighty, Dennis, you had some comments?
Yes, sir, um, yeah, so I just wanted to uh clarify in part that they don't deal wetlands part of that. They're being investigated from out of the area, obviously, uh, in the Shiva property, uh, in the Disco River, and in the back of this property, uh, there is a wetland actually in Bedford, um, but even if you measure a hundred feet from that, it's fairly well defined courtesy of the bowl shape and the topography. Uh, this project is not within a hundred-foot buffer, so there's no concerns with that. I guess I was into tables and trees, so I included in this as well, uh, summary of of all the trees and and their conditions. And as Sabrina pointed out, uh, there are twenty-four trees in in this table. Uh, the plan only uh chose, I guess, to show the fifteen that uh would require replacement based on their condition. Um, but I I did mention to the applicant, uh, I think we smoked it after my memo, that it might be a good idea to show all twenty-four because obviously, I think to help uh promote and maximize the the argument, the approach that, you know, uh, showing the other trees that need to be removed that, you know, were in poor condition, wouldn't necessarily require replacement, uh, that 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 can reveal that this, you know, is the, you know, sort of best approach with respect to, you know, consideration for trees and tree removals. So it would be good to just sort of see where all twenty-four sort of, you know, line up with respect to the proposal. Uh, and as uh it was mentioned, um, obviously, there was nothing, um, provided with respect to how they were proposing to be tree replacements, I provided those calculations and I guess that would be part of the review and another, uh, another submission. And those are the end of my comments.
Okay, great. So we have a couple of issues, a couple of uh comments, so if you can uh get that to us as soon as possible here again and uh get this going for you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Alright, great, so let us know when you're ready and.
The training agenda.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. Okay, our next item is a concept plan, this is two eleven King Street, two eleven King Street LLC, I guess. So it's a concept plan application for removal of an existing building and construction of a multifamily development.
Hi, good evening, Jim Manicarico, Crowning Engineering, uh representing Steve Tabalachi, the applicant, uh for this potential project. So, we have a fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty-eight square foot piece of property that has an existing uh multifamily dwelling on it. Uh, got five existing bedrooms in the structure itself. Uh, we are in the uh B dash R, uh, this is residential, uh, district, zoning district. Uh, and we are also in the M F R C, uh, overlay district, or special district, uh, overlay, overlay district, sorry. So, what we're proposing to do is to remove the existing structure and uh construct uh four two-bedroom units, um, that uh, you know, with parking in the back, uh, we do have a, uh, the site has an existing driveway on the left-hand side of the property that we would widen and and utilize to, you know, to gain access to the rear. Um, these units uh would have garages in the back, at least the three that are facing, you know, the front on King Street. Uh, we do have one separate unit, uh, that's towards the back of the the property, uh, that would have uh an additional garage, it would, that would also have a garage, so we're, those, those, we'd have parking in those garages and then we'd have additional parking on the lot itself. I think we had, came up with twelve or ten parking spaces total. Did we exceed the the number that we need by three? So, one of our, if you go, if you look, per per the uh requirements of the M F R C, for two-bedroom units, you need uh at least, you know, forty-four hundred square feet of area of of property, um, to make, you know, to make that happen. So we would need uh seventeen thousand and and change, uh, seventeen thousand six hundred, um, for these four two-bedroom units. Uh, as I mentioned, we only have fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty-eight square feet of of lot area. Uh, however, there is, uh, there are incentives in the overlay zone, uh, that allow you uh additional, uh, that allow you to gain additional area to 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 allow that to happen.
So you're saying the incentives bring down that seventeen thousand down to fourteen thousand, so you could squeeze in the fourth?
I think it's more of you get extra credit for those somehow, we're still not really exactly sure how the percentage is, what they're, what the, what you would get a percent, you know, how how you would figure out the percentage that would increase your density.
The fourth unit is making the assumption you got those incentives checked off, gotcha, okay.
Correct. Um, some of the, some of the incentives are uh underground parking or, you know, under the dwelling parking. Uh, so that's one of the items that we think we check. Uh, one of the other uh items is uh uh increased setbacks and and special buffer screening techniques. Um, we far exceed the rear yard setback for the for the lot that's furthest back on the property. So we think we, you know, are able to gain some incent, you know, incentive uh for that, or some some area for that. Um, and then uh off-site construction, that's obviously up to the town, you know, we, certain projects, uh, that I guess we're, we're aware of a uh, of the Chapagola Line, uh, trail that's being proposed. And, you know, that's something that we think maybe we could propose to do something for that, say like a patio area somewhere in the in the middle of the trail with benches or or something like that, so. Um, but we're looking for your guidance, obviously, on on how we can, you know, get to the number that we need. So.
This is water sewer, right?
This is water sewer, that's correct, yeah, it is water sewer, um, no wetlands anywhere near us, so we don't believe it, happy to have Dennis confirm that, but.
This is all. Is there any historic significance to the uh building that you are going to demolish?
No, we don't believe so.
Okay. Do we know when it was built?
Yeah.
Ah, nineteen forty, okay.
And is this just a massive study, or is this kind of telegraphed in your 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 layout?
Pretty much.
We've, we've, you know, we've put in some work, we, you know, we have put some work into the layout, actually, you know, changed a few things, we've,
Yeah, we've studied this.
Um, you know, we've developed the driveway entrance a little bit more to to meet town code. We've, uh, you know, we have dug some deep test holes on the site at the back for potential drainage areas, and we think we have good soils for drainage. Sewer, um, you know, we do think we can uh make simple sewer connections out on King Street. Uh, the the proposed building at, you know, further back on the lot, we even think we can get that to work gravity. Um, however, if we needed to, we, you know, pump that, we would pump that up.
Okay, Sabrina, you had some thoughts about the uh um incentive program?
Sure, um, the M F R C incentive program, the incentives are, as they're currently written, are very convoluted. Uh, Mr. Tabalachi said he wants to move forward with them, but there is a conflict within the town code right now when it comes to coverage. The actual code language requires twenty percent building coverage, or sets limits on building coverage and development coverage. Um, but the uh attached table says its coverage is not applicable. So I have a request into legal counsel to, um, help me decide, you know, what prevails here, because it's conflicting information. Because I'm not sure, you know, the the concept that is set forth, um, you know, there's, there's a level of confidence that the M F R C incentives are, um, dictating the density that is needed for the four units. The question then becomes, does the site meet the coverage requirements, or does it have to meet the coverage requirements? And that's something that we need to do further analysis in town, um, to determine. But I do have, um, suggested language changes for those incentives before town council right now, because I do think that the way they're written is very convoluted and does not reflect the benefit of the type of housing that the hamlet is looking to uh create.
Okay. Bob, did you have some thoughts, uh, on on this, um, concept plan?
You're on, you're on. Still on you, Bob.
Sorry about that, Mr. Chairman.
There you are.
One little one I don't seem to know this is on, sorry. Uh, yes, I just wanted to reiterate, which I know I went over quite several times with speed in the past, is that because this is a special circumstance with stormwater, everything's going from King Street down south. And the importance of the stormwater in this particular case is that it's gotta pick up one hundred percent of the one hundred-year storm, which is gonna be a full flat out nine point two eight inches. Because there's no areas for the overflow to go to, this is all surrounded with private properties. Not unless Mr. Tabalachi can get an easement going west out to Maple Avenue, but I believe you tried that Stevenson, I don't know if that was accurate.
Correct, that's correct.
So in this particular case, the stormwater will have to be no pre-imposed, because when you do a pre-imposed, you only pick up about four inches and that's it. And anything over that's gonna be overflowing to private properties, which we don't want in a new development. So the stormwater will have to pick up a full flat out nine point two eight, so just keep that in mind when you do with the stormwater report.
So, we had a question about that, Jim, do you wanna tell them about the catch basin and the flow of the roof leaders?
Um, yeah, I guess.
There's a catch basin right.
The thought was that we, you know, connect the, at least the front half of the of the house to the existing system out in King Street.
So we don't jump it.
And and take the uh the rest of the impervious area to the back.
Well, if you have gravity and you can pick it up, show it the way you do the drainage divide, and you wanna do a pre-imposed on the front where you know,
Show it.
and you can demonstrate by gravity that it goes into the state system, is that what you're thinking of doing?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's that's acceptable, but you know, anything that you can't overflow into a closed system, i.e. state, county, town,
That's, that's acceptable.
you have to pick a hundred percent, yeah, that's 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 fine, that seems reasonable.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's fine. And you wanna talk about the credit for the existing building, Jeff?
Stormwater. Oh, well, well, I thought we weren't getting.
Uh, there's gonna be no credit for it, it's, it's all gonna be based on the built-out condition
Yeah, right, yeah.
with a flat out nine two eight, where you can't overflow into a closed system without going on private property.
Is that what you did, uh, Bob, is that what you did for us? We, I built ninety-one Bedford Road, as you guys know. Bob, did you give us any, um, you know, there was a building on that property, did we get credit for that? Do you remember, for ninety-one Bedford Road?
Uh, no, you did not, no.
There's, there was no credit for that one?
No, there was not, and everything, you don't have to do a flat out nine two three or nine two eight, because we had installed a catch basin in the back previously, which you guys tied into with the overflow.
And then that new project at fifty-one North Greeley, did they get any credit for that, that Rite Aid building? That that one that's gonna be built? I just wanted to be.
The one with Greeley?
Yeah, the one that next door, Susan Lawrence Building that we own.
That one they do, yes, because that's like a redevelopment, yes.
So why, why, why do they get a credit and we don't?
Because they have an overflow area to go to. They have the town system to tie it to any overflow that system they have, this is not in the back, so there's no credit.
So one of the issues, I think you mentioned that there were two more parking spaces than you needed. So, I mean, conceptually, it just strikes me as, there's a lot of pavement here on on a parcel that has got some real stormwater challenges. Why do we have the two extra parking spaces if we reduce that, would that help you with your stormwater equations and flow?
Yeah, I guess when I say two, actually, I think that's the. Yeah, I guess when I say two, actually, I think that's to meet the 20% requirement for visitors in this type of facility, I think.
Well, you mean parking for visitors. I was just wondering, I thought, I interpreted when you said that, that you had two more than is what it required. And if that's the case, why are we doing it? If we have these kind of challenges for stormwater. But if they're required because of guests, then they're required, they have to be there.
I mean, we could certainly look at that and.
So the 10 spots showed on the drawing now are required by the current code?
We are required to provide four spaces for the four units. And then, I guess, based on the bedrooms, another 2.7, so really three. So we're required to show seven spaces.
Seven.
We're showing 10 total.
Okay.
And I think that is to.
And so there's no visitor required?
I think that's, I think that's why we showed an extra, I mean, it just kind of worked out that way that there were three. We can eliminate one, I guess, it's probably not going to matter stormwater-wise, let's put it that way. Not, not, it wouldn't make enough of an impact.
It would not, okay, alright.
So just, just for, you know, clarification on impervious areas we're talking about. The site has an existing 5,150 square feet. We're proposing 9,345 total, that's not in addition to that. So the net increase is almost 4,200 square feet. But we do have, you know, a significant area at the rear of the property that we think we can do stormwater there. We have an area to the side of the, of the unit towards the back and we could probably even do something under the parking spaces.
Now, you guys, I remember reading you wanted a poll, you want a poll close up so you can align up with your neighbors to the left and the right. I think I read something like that, as far as your front yard setback.
We do need, we do need a front yard setback, I guess it's a fairly significant one.
If you were to push back just deeper into the site to get more green along the street, can you circulate your cars or are you pitched?
Yeah, I don't think we'd be able to circulate. We, we're kind of tight now, I mean, it works.
I'm trying to get some green closer to the, I'm trying to get some green closer to the house. To the units. To the units. Yeah. Because I'm just, you know, you got this big green space way in the back, right? Right. And if there's any kids living here, it would be nice if it was closer to the unit so parents can maybe keep an eye on it. Here, it's way behind another unit and it might just kind of be, you know, out of sight. It might just become a private yard for that one unit. Well, don't forget, though, you have King Street, so it's a double yellow. Yeah, no, I'm not saying in the front. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was trying to get green space behind, right behind, between that area. Just so it's, you have like a little backyard, that's right. But you may not be able to.
So on the first floor, you have a garage and then also living space on the other part of the first floor?
Well, I guess, if you're coming in off King Street, that's the first floor. You got a floor above that and then you have the basement with the parking.
Well, the same, the same grade that you have for the garage, is that living space also on the other side of the garage?
Uh, yes, yes.
Yeah, the floor plan.
Essentially the basement, as you would call it.
The garage is like a workshop and some gym spaces, a mechanical and, you know. Oh, and an elevator.
Yes.
What I was getting at is whether or not there was any room for a second car in one or two of these to put, you know, two cars inside.
We thought about doing a two-car garage and getting rid of that workshop, you know? Well, two-car garage would get rid of a lot of those surface spots and, yeah. Good point.
Could help you.
I mean, you know your marketing and the market, you know, clientele you're selling to.
Were these big rentals?
And then two-car garages are. I don't know yet, I mean, you know, Chappaqua needs rentals. I mean, we have 91 Bedford Road, we do very well, that's all rentals, as you guys know. So I don't know what we're going to do yet.
Okay. Well, I think we gave you some ideas, you heard, you know, obviously the regulation is, it's got to be interpreted. And then we have, you've got significant stormwater challenges to figure out. And then, you know, so I guess, I guess those are our thoughts on a concept basis. So I guess there's nothing more we can really do at this point.
And is this the aesthetic you're proposing? Pretty much, yeah, we're going a little bit back and forth, but that's pretty much what it's going to be.
Are you guys acting as the architect or are you using the numbers?
No, I have Teo Sigowenza at Bedford Village. No, just the incentives.
Yeah, I guess the incentives.
You know, that's kind of our biggest thing. Do you guys want some off-site improvements? We own the building, Susan Lawrence Building. To the left of that is a little green area, maybe we can do something extra there. The Chappaqua line that is proposed, you know, I thought about, I spoke to Sabrina about this. Maybe the middle, down the middle of it, we could do a couple benches, a garbage can, a meeting spot for people if they want to meet at one, you know, the area. People to sit and talk and communicate. I thought that was it when I spoke to Sabrina, is right, Sabrina, did you think that was a good idea?
I'm sorry, Steve, what was that, what incentive?
When we talked about the off-site improvement.
Yeah, and listen, I think, I think that it is, once we get the conflict resolved, I think the board will have to be very well educated about the incentive provisions. I'm happy to educate the board about the incentive provisions because it's hard for them, you know, right now to do it, but there is opportunity in the town for off-site improvements. And I think that the planning board can authorize a credit of density for the applicant to conduct off-site improvements. And, you know, what I would like to do is provide you all with a copy of that code and a full education as to what the incentives mean and the percentages that can be received.
Just, for your information, we, on Chief S B 2.1, we did show a list of all the incentives that are available and the percentages and whatnot, so that is on the plan, I think. I guess our question, Sabrina, is, you know, it says, for instance, substantially increased setbacks or special buffer screening techniques, including without limitations, earth berms, masonry walls, etc. And it says, you know, that you can receive up to 10%. What is that 10% of, is it the lock area?
It's a 10% of the minimum, the maximum allowable density. There's an entire formula, I have language proposed to make it easier to calculate. If you want to go with the existing code, then, you know, I can walk you through. It's an increase in the density that you can achieve onsite as of right. So let's say you can have 5,000 square feet of building. You can increase that 5,000 square feet for 10, by 10% if you provide that incentive.
Okay.
So you get another 500 square feet.
Now, these incentives.
For a thousand, a thousand square feet.
Now, these incentives, does the planning board have to tell us which ones they would like? Or can we?
The planning board will have to bless the incentives that you are offering.
So can you guys bless them?
I'll have an order.
They don't have enough information there or enough understanding of the incentives to do that tonight, Steve.
No comment.
Right, the incentives don't bind the board. So you can't say you have to approve this, this, and this because that gets me to where I need to go.
Right.
You need to propose an incentive, the board thinks it fits and then it works together.
Right, and I think that the coverage conflict is a big issue right now.
Is it Jim?
I guess Sabrina is saying that there's something, I mean, when we look at the zoning, it says, you know, basically says NA, right? For lot coverage.
When you look at the table, the zoning table, it says NA. When you read the zoning code, when it describes the M F R C, it lists the coverage.
Which was back in 2011 and the M F R C is 2012, the table.
That table is not 2012. That table, the last amendment to that table was in 2011, Steve.
Well, it says 07/11/2012.
On a print copy that I haven't, I'm not going to argue this with you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Very good, yep, thanks.
So, 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 so what do we, we wait for you, Sabrina? What, like, what, how do we continue going forward with this?
Um, I, you know, I think that I need to get that response from legal counsel as to the conflict and, you know, and I can let you know what the result that is. Um, you know, there existing today is a conflict. Um, and then it's a matter of refining your plans to address the stormwater issues and submitting an application, you know, the board is willing to entertain the incentives.
Okay. And is there a timeframe where we can get this from you?
Um, I'm hoping to have a conversation this week.
Oh, great.
I guess I would just add that, I guess we wouldn't want to fully develop out the stormwater requirements until we know that we have something that's at least, you know, got a shot of being approved.
Of course.
So.
Of course, we understand.
Okay.
Sure. And you have other things that you can think about, also, we talked about those, two-car garages.
Right, right.
You know, what, 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 what's the question?
Well, you know, the next steps, to be quite honest with you, is, um, I'll find out about the conflict that exists and try and resolve that. I would like to understand what you think your incentives mean as far as density. Um, so maybe, Steve, we can sit down and go through it and look at the math to make sure you're getting, you're interpreting the code the way it needs to be interpreted with the facts.
That would be, yeah, that would be.
Yes, we, we, we did that together in December.
We didn't have concrete drawings, but.
And, well, you gave me those numbers. I have them written down, um, but yes, we can, we can.
And what I'm going to say is I'd like to reexamine those numbers in light of my diving deep into the M F R C.
Okay.
I'd like to be there, so.
Well, I will say, the M F R C does encourage development, which is why you guys overlaid that on the, on the code, so.
Yeah, listen, you know, I will inform the board that the development that's being proposed is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's consistent with the type of development that, you know, the community has asked for in the hamlet on a parcel-by-parcel scale. Um, you know, so, you know, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. You know, the question is, does it work on this site?
And, you know, one thing you might want to think about, you're looking for an incentive credit for parking underneath the building, but only half the parking is under the building, so you might only get half the incentive credit. You might want to, that might be a way to think about double parking in the building.
Tandem.
Yeah, or.
Or double.
They can only have 90% of their parking under a building.
Only 90%? Okay, so right now, right now, you guys are like 50%.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
So they could move four more cars in and just have like one visitor spot outside.
Yeah.
Correct.
Maybe, okay.
Good, okay, good.
Alright, thanks. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you for the time, we appreciate it.
Alright, our last item is, we have the minutes of February 4.
Oh, I've got so many comments on these.
You can have those by yourself.
No, I have no comments on the minutes.
No comments?
No comments.
Steve, any comments?
No.
Any comments, no, okay. Not seeing any comments, is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So we're all set there, and I had a couple of changes that I'll have to look into right now, so I don't forget. So otherwise, is there a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.